I'd like to call the meeting special, is it Police Commission meeting? Joint meeting of the Police Commission and the Board of Selectmen at January ninth and it's five oh two. Um, so we will call the meeting to order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I'm going to turn the meeting over to the presenters. Whatever you would like to do.
I'd rather just sit and have a conversation, but I can stand up here. It's all good. I've got this. Good afternoon, good evening. I am Jenna Caulfield, Chair of Simsbury Police Commission. Here with me this evening is my fellow Commissioner Mike Long, as well as the Chief Nick Bolter and Deputy Chief Chris Davis. We are here because public safety is paramount and determining the public safety budget should be considered first. That is the reason that the town charter and the MOU have tasked the Police Commission with uh preparing and submitting and presenting this budget to you all. The budget we are presenting this afternoon is the absolute minimum we feel that is necessary to provide the services that this town deserves. It is above our fis- it's an increase to our fiscal year twenty-three budget, but it is fiscally responsible and it is lean. So what drives our budget? First, we want to continue providing exemplary service to the town. Community policing. It enables us to create a trust between the community and law enforcement. Fiscal responsibility. We are here to balance the fiscal responsi- of our town's needs with the services they need. And we want to proactively address public safety concerns before they arise. So what are we asking for? Uh, today, our budget priorities are again staffing. I know we have said that year after year when we come to speak to you guys. This year, we are asking for three sworn officers, as well as one civilian police clerk, and additional hour per day for our current part-time clerk. When we were considering our staffing, we looked at the volume and types of services we provide. We looked when we patrol neighborhoods, businesses, parks, schools, and so forth. We looked at our participation in community events. We looked at the officer-to-resident ratio, and we considered requests from the community. It is those requests for the community that brings us to our first sworn officer position, a third SRO. I think everybody here has kids or has had kids in our school system, so you're familiar with our SROs. We have one uh officer at the high school, as well as another officer who rotates between the middle school and the elementary schools. The uh residents of this town have requested that we have an officer permanently at both the high school and the middle school. In order to do that, we would need a third SRO. This year, we were able to fill the high school with an SRO full-time by using overtime and uh having other officers sub in when he was out on training or vacation or sickly. So we were able to do that, and it was considered a ve- a success at the high school. The second position for a sworn officer we're seeking is for traffic enforcement. Again, this is something that you all have heard about. Uh, we prioritized having a traffic enforcement officer last May. It has been a success, and unfortunately, our staffing does not allow us to provide those services on the evening shift. So we are asking for a traffic enforcement officer for the evening shift as well. And as I said last year, in case you um don't recall, traffic enforcement isn't just sitting, setting up speed traps. It's more than that. It's looking at line of sight and preventing accidents when they can and investigating complaints and so forth. The final sworn officer position we're asking for is a sergeant for the evening shift. And this is kind of exciting because it's a little bit of a jack-of-all-trades and it has many multiple uh areas that it'll be covering. Uh, the sergeant will handle dispatch- dispatch supervision, which uh would be if there are multiple calls coming in and they need coverage or they need a break. In addition, there'd be administrative reviews, fill-in for the patrol supervisor during overtime, uh inspections of prisoner management during the evening hours when we have a prisoner in our lockup area, uh shift assignments and staffing, and also providing patrol function support, so if we need an extra body out on the streets. So those are the three sworn officer positions we're asking for. Any questions?
Do you want us to ask questions as you go?
It's up to you. Like, if you think of something, you're like, oh, or I can hold off and get through all of the staffing.
It's up to you.
You have a question? No, I thought you were waving at me. Apologies. Um, so then our civilian positions. One would be for a full-time police clerk. We haven't had a full-time police clerk in forever, ever, ever. Uh, and that clerk...
Sorry, is this John, could you? Thank God.
Uh, that clerk would handle various record assignments, including pistol permits or um fingerprints. They would handle the uh data entry and administrative services to support our training supervisor. When an officer goes through training, there's a lot of documentation that needs to be submitted to get that officer the certification for the training, and that is something that a full-time record uh police clerk could do. And lastly, we hope to have them tackle our scanning project uh management. Right now, we have tons of pistol permits, and I left it over there. I'm gonna get my visually, because I actually brought one. We have, this is just one pistol permit. You see, it's about half an inch thick. There's nothing special about this. There's nothing particularly difficult. But we get three to four hundred of these in a calendar year. They all take up space. We would like to have these digitized and then the process digitalized, and a police clerk would be the one to handle that. It would not only make the process more efficient, it would help reduce the paperwork that we have and free up space in a very cramped area as it is. Um, and then lastly, I mentioned we would like to add one hour per day to our part-time clerk, so that she would go from a seventeen-point-five-hour work week to a twenty-two-point-five-hour work week. So those are all of our staffing requests. We also are asking for overtime increase. Uh, last year, our overtime with fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-two was three-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-one-hundred-and-four dollars. That is eighty-six thousand dollars over budget. Uh, unfortunately, overtime is not solely a function of staffing. Uh, like I mentioned earlier, we were able to use overtime to staff the third SRO or to fill in for the high school SRO, but it's also a function of holdovers when an officer is working and his shift ends, but his case isn't. Uh, it helps suppress spikes in crime. It helps uh investigations. So there are a lot of functions that contribute to overtime, which is one of the reasons we're asking for the increase in our overtime budget. Uh, the last item on the operating budget are vehicles. These are kind of hinky because sometimes they're in the CNR and sometimes they're on the operating budget. Um, so this has been part of the six-year CNR plan where we get three admin ve- or three cruisers and two admin vehicles, but they are considered part of our operating budget. Speaking of vehicles, on our CNR is our ACO vehicle. It is a two thousand thirteen. It is ten years old. It has done a fantastic job, but it's ready to be sent out to pasture. So we are asking for another ACO vehicle. It is an animal control officer vehicle. It's a different type of vehicle than our cruisers. It's larger. It has a bigger back for um stuff. Um, the next item on our CNR budget is software. We are uh asking to have real-time scheduling software that will take um place of our current paper system. Right now, if an officer wants to find out their schedule or overtime or any of that, they have to call in and ask a dispatcher, ask their supervisor, ask administration. So this would allow the officers to find out their schedules via an app or through the computer. It also frees up our administration from the paper system, and it allows them to run reports on shifts, on an officer's schedule. You can do all sorts of things because it would remove the paper aspect. Uh, this next one is a tongue twister for me. I'm just gonna give you a heads up. Uh, it's for less lethal launcher replacements. Currently, we have a shotgun beanbag system. It is more than twenty years old. They no longer make these or use these typically. So we are asking for the uh updated less lethal launcher beanbag replacements. Uh, they're nice because not only will our officers know what they are, other officers know by looking at them from other departments that this is less lethal munitions and not regular weapons. Uh, they're not only used to uh in criminal situations. In Simsbury, we use them a lot to uh haze bears. So they have multipurpose in our town. The last item that I have listed up here is our taser replacement. Again, this is on the CNR six-year plan. Our uh current ones are past their lifespan, and the new taser replacements not only include the taser, but it has a warranty and component system, so that if something was to go wrong or break, that they are repaired and replaced as part of the purchase of the taser. And I have a couple of things that are not up here that I just wanted to um, they were small requests that I wanted to bring your attention to. One are roadside cameras. I don't know if anyone has noticed in Avon, but on forty-four, they have these cameras that are just mounted into the ground, and they are called uh FLOCK LPR license plate reading cameras. And what they do is they just take snapshots of the license plates as they go by. Uh, Simsbury is asking for these. They are used to um invest- for investigative purposes, so of stolen vehicles or vehicles used in crime, missing persons. They do not livestream. They are not used for traffic enforcement. So you will see those as part of our budget. Uh, we also need to replace seven ballistic vests. Uh, we're not replacing all of them, but we do have seven that are past their lifespan. And last, uh, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up about a facility study. A couple of years ago, the town did its master facility study, and at that point, several items in the police department were ticked off. And that now has led to Tech Ton doing a facility studies of our police department. It is ongoing. It is not near completion yet, but I wanted to give you all a heads up, so that at some point, you're not like, woo, what is this facility study and where did it come from? So they have completed the part where they look at what the needs are, and now they're assessing what we have and how to address those needs. And that concludes our budget priorities, and I would love to have your questions.
I, I don't, I wanna, I'd like to let other people ask questions. I have a list, so.
I have a couple of questions.
Hit me.
Um, the request for a full-time SRO for middle school, are there reas- is there reasoning behind it, or is that been, is that something that's sort of been in the works as of?
It's been in the works. Um, several residents had mentioned that they would like to have an SRO full at, full-time at the high school as well as the middle school. So um, the department has talked with uh the superintendent, and it seems to be something that both both agencies, organizations, parties like. Um, and so this year, to kind of test it out, we did look to fill that SRO position at the high school all the time, so that when the officer was at training or on vacation, there was still somebody there, and it was considered quite a success.
Yeah, I know it's been very successful at the high school, the SRO there. It's great. Um, and then the replacement items that you have?
Yes.
Um, the vehicle tasers, how, what is the lifespan on that, and is there a potential trade-in value?
Taser for car, okay. Different vehicles have different lifespans depending on their use. So our um cruisers have a lifespan of two to three years, depending on how many miles and how much. Our admin vehicles are four to five?
Five to six.
Five to six. So it really depends on the amount of use the car gets. Um, as far as the tasers, it depends, I think, on these specific tasers. Ours have a five-year. Time, the ones that we have currently are five years. Absolutely. Thank you.
I, I want to add on, I have the same question on the SRO.
Okay.
Um, what, what was driving that request this year? And also, I know you said a few residents, but uh um I would assume, like, if that was something we would consider, we would want to hear buy-in from the Board of Ed, that they feel that that's a need on their, in their schools. You know, I, I don't know if that's true, but they would probably have to push for that a little bit, I, I would think. Um, the other question I had is the traffic officer. We did get a new officer last year. So we're saying that this person only can work a day shift, so now we need to hire somebody in for the evening shift.
Correct.
For that same function.
Well, that would be one of the functions that they cover, yes.
Okay. Um, I had a couple of other questions, but I was gonna go to capital, just, I'll move down the line. The, the, you know, most of the items are already in here, you know, the, the off-three cruisers or, like, I think we do that every year. Um, but it sounds like the new asks, which were not in the six-year plan last year, is the software request is a new ask. And then this less lethal launcher replacement is a new ask. Um, and one other thing is, would we be able to get a fig- like, just a ballpark on what all the new hires proposed are, what the impact of that would be to our operating budget? Be something I would want to see.
So we, we have the actual, like, forms.
Okay.
I don't know. I can get you guys copies of them. I, you know, I have the these things. The actual CNR forms, which discuss, like, okay, how mu- like, the breakdown and stuff.
Yeah, but even for the um, if we're, if you're asking for four positions, what would that do to our budget?
Yeah, so the way that that has to go, like, the way that we submit it with town, and I know our, our commission had some um concerns about the terminology. So when we are requesting a new officer, it's considered a service improvement, and that's how it goes through the town. We don't feel like these are service improvements. We feel like these are necessities.
Okay.
Um, so I, I have, I can give them to you. They're considered, like, the, the form in which the breakdown is, is on the service improvement, but I just want to be clear that the position of the commission is, these are not service improvements. These are necessities.
Okay, okay. Go down there.
Uh, uh, I know we keep hitting on this, this SRO at the, at the middle school, but that also was one that, that I had a question about, and I, I just, um, so this request, you said, was brought up by residents, but the residents made the request directly to who? To the police department instead of the Board of Ed? I don't understand how.
They bring it to both. Uh, so the way that this position works, and the chief can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but it is a split position between, when you're in SRO, through the police department and the Board of Ed. But this is our budget, so we are including it in ours, and I am sure, and I'm not sure, actually, I haven't, I don't know specifically how the Board of Ed budget breaks down. But they are, it, this is not out of left field. They're quite aware of this.
So it's at least the second year where we, when we talked about it, this year we decided collectively, this is the year that we're going to make that request. Last year, we made small steps to make sure that, as, as I've been saying, when there was an absence of the SRO at either the high school or the middle school, we would take another officer and put that officer in there. And we're sort of viewing it as, like, any given day at the high school, there are uh hundreds and hundreds of, of people. And that's like a little district for us, just like we have, we have, you know, cruisers out there. And these people are all, you know, pushed in together with a lot of dynamics working. And the same thing with the middle school, and then there are the elementary schools, which get the services, but they don't get the attention that we want to be able to provide to them on a regular basis. So now the future plan, the middle school SRO would not have to leave the premises to try to address some issues and work at any one of the five elementary schools. This would be a dedicated person to those five.
So this is something that has been discussed with the Board of Ed party, okay.
Can, um, what are the um evening hours, the evening shift?
Three o'clock.
Okay. Can you talk, um, either of you, about the, the urgency of the um traffic enforcement during those hours and sort of the gap that that would be filling?
Go ahead.
So, every officer is responsible for traffic enforcement. What we have found, though, is if we dedicate somebody to the traffic enforcement, there is a level of consistency that we don't get when an officer is assigned to handle, you know, calls for medicals, for domestics, for, you know, any one of the hundreds of different things that the officer is handling. Their sole responsibility, or I should say their primary responsibility, is traffic enforcement. And sometimes you, like, right now, if we have a one cruiser out there in a particular district, they could go most of the evening with a bunch of uh incidences and reports and spend little to no time being able to do traffic enforcement. So it's, it's really important. I think what we've seen over the last, you know, two years, like, through the pandemic, coming out of the pandemic, is the need for much more reliance in, in our driving. I know there's a discussion statewide, regionally, nationwide, everything from speed to stop signs, to traffic lights, to uh graduated license driving, to crosswalks, you know, all sorts of things. And right now, we have an officer assigned from six AM to two PM. And so he's handling, you know, those hours there, but that's basically his sole dedication. And as Jenna said, also looking at, like, line of sight issues. Somebody said, you know, they come up to a stop sign and they don't have a good view either to the left or the right. How are we gonna tackle that? And you need that during the evening shift as well. And what makes that different than the midnight shift is there's so many more people out. We have almost the same amount of people out during a good portion of the evening shift as we do during the daytime. People coming home from work, out and about for activities during the evenings. So the need is definitely there, and we're looking for that consistency.
Thank you.
I, I have another question. Um, the clerk, so you're asking for a full-time clerk and then expanded hours of a part-time clerk. If, is, is it possible that one clerk would be able to just, if, if a full-time clerk was hired, would that person be able to take on this extra work of doing the pistol permits and then whatever the part-time clerk was doing? Or if the part-time clerk, I'm just saying, because we don't know what's gonna happen when we get to, you know, the budget. Uh, if the part-time clerk was taking on more hours, could they handle the pistol permit and the ask for the full-time clerk be less?
So the pistol permit was really just a mere example?
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah.
And the need to make all of our documents difficult is not so much in preparing those documents for people to fill out, but um as Jenna had indicated, like, our, our facility itself, we are running out of room. And so this is one way for us to really charge forward in trying to make all of our current documents, because there are some that we have to keep for five years, for ten years, and we can scan all those. That takes a tremendous amount of time. But going back, you know, starting with five years ago, we can start scanning all of this and make it digital, you know, on something that's stored like this, and start clearing up some space. But if you look at that folder, and you look at, you know, three-hundred-and-sixty-five of those from two thousand and twenty, and a hundred and fifty-five of those from last year, now multiply that out for the number of years we have to keep those. That's just, it's, it's a lot of space. So, yes, we could do with, with any bit of help, but I think that will really move us forward in a lot of different areas. One is, is reducing the amount of physical size that, that we need. And the second is taking a little bit of stress off the other aspects of the department, because as a, as a police clerk, instead of just a records clerk, there's multiple other uses uh for that person, like rolling fingerprints. Instead of pulling an officer in from the road to be able to roll eight-hundred fingerprints that we do a year, a police clerk can do that. We had one doing that uh from two thousand and ten to two thousand and fifteen, and then that position wasn't refilled. So I think there's a lot of different things that that, that a full-time police clerk position could do that.
Yeah, can I? I, I, I wanted to ask a follow-up to that to clarify, because it seems like, from what I'm hearing, like, the, the permit request and, and the work that the police clerk would do, it sounds like it's getting done. It, it's not that it, the work isn't getting done now.
Correct.
It, it, it's, it could be an opportunity to leverage that work from a sworn officer to a clerk. Is that?
Up to a degree. So, just a little visual, visual, just, just like a lot of our work, you take this work and you put it back there, then it sits back there until you get this work, you know, this other work that's coming in done. And that's what we're seeing in records. And so one example of the current setup now, we have uh dispositions that come in from a court. And those dispositions come in electronically, which is great, but the records clerks have to look at those and say, okay, did it come through properly? And then every once in a while, they don't come through, and that's a disposition, meaning a person was found, not guilty, guilty, whatever, whatever it is. And they have to check that with the system. Those have been piling up and piling up, and we're a year-plus behind on that. So it's not a matter of just leveraging some of the sworn work. It's also being able to keep up with the, with the current work. Uh, the pistol permits have their own, their own issues, because it's taking us a long time, because we send letters out to other departments to do background checks. But, you know, those have been a bit of a purring, because they put a, a cap on us, a limit on us, on how long it can take us to process a pistol permit. Sometimes we meet that, sometimes we just don't, we, we can't meet that, and we'd like to tighten that up a bit.
And, and do we collect fees on those permits?
We do.
One more question that you referred to in here that, um, wow, what's the word, the thing in the room? Like, the service study, the police work study, which we, it sounds like we're not gonna have any results um before the submission. So, you know, we, makes it hard to make judgments on staffing needs before that's done. So just curious, like, we won't have any input from that. So we could be, you know, if we follow this, we could be overstaffing, or we could be understaffing, depending on the outcome. Okay, so before...
They were here for two days, and they promised to have us a preliminary report, just to give us an idea of, of what they're coming up with.
So when you guys come back, when we do our, the, the big budget, right, we'll have some, some more data either to support, to, to work with.
But I want to be clear, like, we feel these positions are necessary now, regardless of the service study. We also know that we have at least six officers who are eligible for retirement based on age and service, and then I believe six more that are eligible on age, though not time of service. And as you know, last year, you guys approved two new officers. We've only been able to fill one position with an internal candidate, well, with a dispatcher.
Right, so we fill up two.
So we still have one opening where we're searching for s- for a qualified candidate. Um, unfortunately, good officers don't just grow on trees. So there is a time factor in if we were hit with multiple retirements, filling those positions.
So just to clarify, the um Tracy moved to, to become, the, promoted and moved to an officer. Didn't we hot, and then we had two, we filled that position, the Kalia position, and then we had two. Did we fill the officer positions, just one of them?
We filled one.
Okay, so we still have one, yeah.
Hey, folks, it's, it's Chris. Um, sorry I couldn't be there in person with you, but I've been listening and watching. Um, I, I, I'm just gonna, just for, just a general standpoint, the, I was gonna wait to weigh in to see if anybody else uh brought up the staffing study. I, I do, I, I have the ability to, to be able to, to push forward and give anything of color um on your ass without the completion of that study. It, I, I understand that you, 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 you say, Jenna, that these are, these are necessary, and you've got conviction around them. We, we would be, we would just be foolish right now, considering spending taxpayer dollars to, to just not wait. I think we've been doing this as best we can in an ad, it, but in an ad hoc manner up until this, up until today. I, I, I don't think, I, I, us waiting another six to twelve months or going with what we have for staffing right now, I, I don't think would be the wrong direction to take, considering we are, we are bringing on boards professionals who tell us exactly what to do to, for us to, to get that stamp of approval of your work and your beliefs. So I'm really hesitant talking about additional staffing until we have that, that, that component. The, the other, eh, to the software, top, the context of software, we're talking about adding bodies. We're talking about, um, we're talking about changing job roles and descriptions and, and bringing in a blended, you know, a, a, a blended profile of, of personnel. But we're also, you talk about adding technology into the mix that will make you more efficient, make your responses more, 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 you know, more targeted, um, themselves more efficient. At, at, at some point, adding all these bodies, adding scheduling software, adding efficiencies, they, it, it has to have a, 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 a deleterious, uh, you know, result and start to be moving backwards. So, uh, uh, speaking to the software, um, can there be human capital gains against human capital on that with that software? So that we may not be adding some of these bodies moving forward?
So the software does not, is not something that the police clerk uh position would be covering? The software is for uh the scheduling of the officers, and that currently is uh something that the admin, uh, we already have does. The software is for uh the scheduling of the officers and that currently is uh something that the admin uh we already have does. Uh the chief's administrative assistant does all of the scheduling. And it also overlaps with officers calling in to dispatch or their supervisors to get the information. Hey, what what shifts are open and so forth? So it's, they're separate entities. The police clerk would not be handling the scheduling and uh real-time information that the software would do. Right now, all of our. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Uh well, I would hope with the with with more intuitive, more modern, more faster software, then that that individual would have less work to do. As far as the input to generate the output. As a potential, then that job, that component moves to someone else. Or that clerk is given something else to do because they're working with better, more intuitive uh the the software moving. It just, that's what we have to be thinking about. We can't be thinking that the software uh is is replaced because it's out of date. But we don't get the any efficiency gains either. That's not why you buy software.
Right, well, there is no soft, there's no software right now that we're replacing. We're replacing paper time sheets and Excel documents that are used to cobble together our uh our scheduling. So it's not a replacement of something that's outdated. It's new and removing the paper component.
Replacement of a pro, it's it's an improvement of a process.
Correct.
And it's a kind of replacement of technology.
Correct.
So I would just think that you should get some, you should get some transfer of 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 capacity. Bringing something like that on board. So I would think about what to do with that capacity as well. Leave good debt.
Okay. Um as far as earlier, when you were saying you didn't feel comfortable going ahead with any sort of staffing until that survey is in. Um I'm going to respectfully disagree. I would say uh you're one of our our public safety uh public liaisons, correct? Why don't you come to one of our meetings? Uh every month we sit down and I can show you guys our packet right now. I have a list of all of the calls from the last two months. I have the previous month compared to the last year. We are going through and looking at every call of service. Are there trends? Are there higher increases in car thefts or catalytic converters? What's going on with the alarm calls? Why do we have so many? We are looking at all of this information. We're looking at the health of our force. What is going on? How many people do we have sick? Are they out on injured or is it COVID? What's going on? Who's on vacation? We're considering all of these different factors every single month. So we do, I believe, as a commission, have a pretty good understanding of what our staffing needs are. I don't, I'm not discounting the certus at all, but this is something we're meeting every month. And I feel like you might have a better understanding of the information we are processing before we come to you with our budget, if you came to some of our meetings.
Yeah, I think that's a fair point. So I mean, normally the budget, the budget presentation you guys make is going to include call volumes, right, on a trend basis? So I presume that based on your comments, those are going up.
Yes.
So we're talking five percent, ten percent?
I don't know the exact numbers.
So that I think that's important.
I mean, I could, I have, I have our packet right in front of me.
No, and I I know you do because again, most of the time it's because you guys schedule the meeting same time as ours, which is why we can't come.
Five P M.
Right.
We're an hour before. There's no excuse. You come to our meeting, you meet with us, you see what we do, and then you can come to your meeting.
But yes, um so but i- it is a valid point, right? We gotta look at those trends much like we look at all of the public safety side. But Chris, what I would, and you and I and and a lot of others uh up up here look at at um retirements ineligible. And that that six number scares the hell out of me, right? It that we could be down six officers in a calendar year. And I think we do need to talk seriously, not necessarily about going up in staffing permanently. Uh that is on the table, but do we go up in staff temporarily? Because we can't afford to go down two, three, six, whatever the number is officer. So I think we've got to talk about vacancies and how do we want to plan for that? You know, do we go up to manage back? There there's a lot of ways um we can look at that. But it also, I mean, we've, we've had this conversation for a number of years. It's hard to find officers. And both the board of selection and the board of finance has been reticent to fund those positions because it's hard to find officers, right? It's a, it's one of the challenges of of supporting positions over the last five years as well. So we've got to continue to talk through that challenge as well. But I don't want to be, you know, come August and you guys are down five officers because of retirements. When could we have pulled the trigger preemptively on some staffing, on getting you ahead on recruiting? To at least get you two or three of those ahead of time? And I I think at least myself and I I imagine others up here would listen to that discussion um as we go through the budget process.
And I just was gonna add, that was part of the rationale we used last year.
Yeah.
When we added the extra officer.
Yeah.
Was looking ahead at retirements and things like that. So if there was proof that it was, it was co- gonna come to fruition fruition, you know. Uh and with the workload increasing, you know, that would be stuff we would.
I mean, to Chris's point, if certus came back and said, absolutely not, you don't need them. We ha- we know that at some point these officers are retiring and we are going to have, just like the police clerk from two thousand and ten was never filled due to attrition. And that's an option.
Yeah, there's a lot of management staff.
And proactively lets us deal with what we know is coming.
What sort of um what sort of time notice do you receive when someone's looking to retire? So say one of the six determines that they would like to retire soon, how much time do you have? Um what sort of notice?
Two weeks. I mean, there's no, there's no formal timeframe in which they need to give us.
Okay.
So to 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 Jenna's approach of how I can be managing my experience as a as a government leader here. I'm not quite sure what was the purpose of us really funding uh globally the thi- this service uh uh uh. A study then, folks, if we're not here to ask for the outside counsel, a group of professionals, to put the stamp of approval on our strategic plan for COVID savings in this town. Whether we should continue to do it year by year in ad hoc fashion, which seemingly hasn't been a problem uh for us. Which if that's what the group wants to support, we continue to do to do that. But we've temp, we've come to the determination that we're at a point where we've got to mature past that point. I think we'd be making a great mistake. And we could always go to the what-if scenario to justify and push us into every decision. Our tasers are out of, our tasers don't get used, but but what if they don't get, if they come to the situation where we have to use them? So that's why they're, they need to be replaced, any of the software. Where there's always the what-if, therefore you guys must move on. I don't, I'm not quite sure how waiting, what is essentially a a budget process, to get that second stamp. To make sure that we're not up, they come back and say, you need five S R Os instead of three additional sworn officers. You need four new traffic people versus one because you've got so many new residents in town and you're getting complaints about traffic. That would be foolish of us for not to be taking that kind of consideration, the depth of the type of focused staffing that we need.
Yeah, no, Chris, I agree with you. And and if if I led you to believe that I didn't agree with that point, uh I'm my apologies, mine is. We need that number, we need those staffing, we we need to understand, is the department, how how would they recommend changing, et cetera? All I was commenting on is if we have six pending retirements, regardless of that study, we want, I want to make sure we we talk through that conversation during the budget.
Eric, did you have a comment? Eric has a comment.
I think two quick things. Um one is just that there might be other creative solutions to plan, being able to plan ahead for those vacancies. Um such as, you know, potentially, I don't know if this is something we could do in the municipal space. But um you know, giving some sort of a a bonus to officers who are able to give us at least X number of months' notice, which would get us ahead of the game. Um this is also, secondly, just more of a question for my colleagues on the board. Um would it be helpful if the police commission were to rank these priorities so that as we're making decisions, we're able to 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 pick off the ones that they feel are the most important?
Well, I think that would be applicable to the police commission and to all the priorities that we're going to get over the next two months. So if we can, if we can have that apply across the board to other departments, which I think has been asked for multiple times. I think that would be a good thing to do.
Well, I think the reality is, is that unfortunately, in a world of finite resources, somebody has to make that ranking. Because we can't give everybody everything that they ask for. So if we don't hear from the departments about what their rankings are, then we have to substitute our judgment for theirs. And it's a tough position to be in because you would love to grant everybody's request, but it's it's difficult. So I think to the extent that they can be ranked with the understanding that, you know, you clearly feel strongly that they're all a priority. They're still, I think, ranking it is helpful.
Yes, I guess if the board's on that, is it Maria? Is that something that is possible, not just for the police, but you know?
I provide you with what, again, I feel for the overall organization of the most important priorities. And you do receive um prior prioritization as manager as part of the proposed budget. You get to see all of the enhancements that the organization has has requested, um which includes the the police commission's priorities as well. Uh and then I shortlist that based on sort of the overall all pieces. You do receive, again, my shortlist of priorities of the organization, but you do see all the backup for requests. So typically, you know, I'd say we receive anywhere between like twenty-five and and thirty requests a year. Um and based on potential resources, you know, I'll typically shortlist that to three to five items um through your consideration.
And those are what you bring to us as the service improvements?
Well, you see all of that, but I I shortlist that and I'm sort of looking at the overall organizational needs and then the resources that might be available.
Okay, so then what's the difference with what the police would be doing than everybody else?
I just don't know what um is going to be presented to us in the town manager's budget.
Right.
Um and it would, it'd just be helpful data point for me. Um because I I fully believe that 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 all of these are necessary or you wouldn't be presenting these. Um but it would, it would be helpful if we have to make hard decisions to know where your head is at in terms of which ones are are truly, you know, most critical.
Gotcha. I I wasn't sure if you, Wendy, were you?
No, I'm just.
Processing.
Yeah, processing is the word.
Gotcha.
I'm sorry, I missed it. What is a less lethal launcher?
It's a beanbag munition. Currently, we use a shotgun platform.
Is this for the bears or the people?
Both.
Do we use it on people or do we just use it on the bears?
It's it's technically designed for some people. We've been fortunate.
And there's eight to ten. I should, I should make that clear. It's not like every officer has one strapped on their their utility belt. There's eight to ten of them total.
Yeah, that's what I picture.
Who are?
T-shirt launcher.
T-shirt launcher.
The games.
I know it's not a laughing matter.
I thought we could uh get some sort of test, like, you know, if you wanted to be a uh.
Do you want that before or after we?
Depends on how your budget system goes.
We should all go through taser training, yeah.
Okay. Uh anybody else have any more questions?
Um just to clarify about the A C O vehicle, uh that is in addition to the regular vehicles that you get.
Yeah, it's not part of the regular.
That's not part of that.
Regular fleet, it's a special A C O car for.
That's what I thought, but I just wondered.
That replacement. We got the current pickup truck, right? That's at the end of the slide?
Yeah.
It's two thousand and thirteen. It's over ten years old.
Oh wow.
Ten years old.
Are there any other uses for that vehicle or is it just solely for?
So we used it for the stuff a cruiser event.
Okay.
And we stuffed it.
Thirteen is pretty young for a.
Yeah, person, right, right? Yeah, working workers, sort of considering like what what options do we have with that as well?
Yeah.
Some mixed use of that.
Yeah.
Within town, so but you know, the animal control officer doesn't normally respond to calls in an emergency manner.
Right.
You know, lights and siren and driving a little bit faster than normal, but um we would like to be a good.
Yeah, you have to have a careful.
When you get to ten years, it's not quite as reliable. One of the reasons for our changeover of the emergency vehicles, the cruisers, so frequently is because we really want them in the top tip-top shape. When the officers are forced to drive over the speed limit and over curbs sometimes. Um so, you know, ten years is.
It as an aside, how are we looking for an animal control officer? Do we have one at this point?
Not yet. So we still have the three vacancies right now, the uh sworn officer, dispatcher, and one.
And I guess my last comment on um when you were talking about having the backlog of of um information to digitize. I mean, would that also be something that could be like a temporary project where you bring in resources to help deal with that backlog? Uh as opposed to a permanent position?
We can take your honor towards it. It's so large that I think that temporarily lasts for a a long time. To then turn into, how do we then maintain that? So there's no way with our current staffing that we'd be able to maintain that because a lot of paperwork still has to come through in a traditional way. And then it has to be converted. There are forms that the state give out, the state gives us, there are forms of duplicate, there's forms that are this size, you know, all sorts of things. So that would all have to be scanned in at some point. So it's a matter of sort of the initial project, which could last a long time. We have years and years. We have, we have documents and records that we have to keep thirty years after an employee leaves. And it takes a long time to scan those in and then develop a plan moving forward. It's not after the people we just did.
It's there. You know, we were saying it needs to be done in a traditional fashion, but. What does it look like going forward of any sort of online process for the entire thing? So there's no having to scan.
So for instance, a, somebody has given a ticket or written warning. That's, that's not an online process.
Yeah.
So we have, we have that, there's all sorts of.
I have more permits and things like that.
Permits, sure, yeah, but sometimes like the state is required to get a copy of that permit in such a way. So there's some limitations on us.
Yeah.
It would be nice to have a lot of that, but sometimes in a review process, it needs to be printed as well. To look at it, to get signatures on it. I mean, there's a way to do it. We're not equipped for the fully digital system. Good, good, sit closer though.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Long? I I do have my fellow commissioner here, so.
I have no questions.
Well, I thought they might want to ask you something.
Thanks Jenna.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we have a ten-minute breather. Before we start the next one.